Need to remind everybody, there will be a school board candidate forum tomorrow night at City Hall that starts at 6:00 PM if you'd like to attend. It's seven o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting door. You all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing, I'll ask Commissioner Teaver to lead us in word prayer.
Father, tonight, Lord, I pray one of your scriptures back to you, Lord. Father, your scripture says, "So I sought for a man amongst them, who would make a wall and stand in the gap before me on behalf of the land; that I should not destroy it, but I found no one." Father, I ask tonight, Lord, that you'll find fourteen of us, or twelve of us, for two that's missing, twelve of us tonight, who is willing to stand in the gap, Lord, on behalf of the county, before you, Lord. Father, be with us in everything that we do, everything that we say, every decision we make, Father, I ask your guidance and your wisdom. I ask you tonight to be with our military, Lord, and especially touch their families, Lord, of the three who was killed overseas, our Lord. Father, strengthen and comfort each and every one of them, their family members, and I ask a blessing on this county, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, guys. We can have a roll call, please.
Elijah Thomas.
Here.
Brian Teever.
You.
Rick Joyner. Randall Redmond.
Here.
Shane Cates.
Here.
Eric Watkins.
Here.
Terry Pichu. Vince Gray. Archie Pryor.
Here.
Melissa Fields.
Here.
Bradley Jones.
Here.
Clint Mathis.
Here.
Mark Dorch.
Here.
Alexis Teed. Here.
Thank you. We did have two commissioners called today. Remember, Mr. Terry Pichu, where he had eye surgery, and Rick Joyner had job applications tonight, so just letting you know about those. Item number five on the agenda is the Governor's Volunteer Star Award. It is something that, kind of needed in my job to get to do this. The Governor's Volunteer Star Awards is an initiative started fifteen years ago, and it's started to recognize outstanding volunteers in each of the ninety-five counties. As a county, we sought out recommendations, and after reviewing those recommendations, we have chosen our award winners, and they will go on to a reception in Nashville where the governor speaks, and just speaks about what a huge undertaking volunteering is. So, at this time, I would like to read to you, our youth volunteer for Stewart County this year is Ms. Callie Cunningham. Her recommendation, I'm not for sure who it came into, I think it came into the school system, but after you hear some of the things this young lady does, it was no reason how she got picked. She wrote, "As God knew once said, 'The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in service of others,' and that is the motto that best describes the actions of Callie Cunningham. Callie's a seventeen-year-old senior in Stewart County High School who displays actions that shows wisdom beyond her years. She has always exhibited a heart of helping, volunteering at all opportunities that arose. Callie began her volunteering journey at a young age by using her free time in elementary school to assist special needs students and volunteer at the Special Olympics. During this time, she discovered her love for children in the act of giving. In middle school, she became involved in the chapter of FCC LA, where she looked for opportunities to promote the key components of family and community through her daily actions. She decorated Christmas trees at the local historical museum, constructed floats for Christmas parades, and helped the FCC LA chapter in neighboring counties. She continued working with special needs student and the Special Olympics. Through high school, Callie has utilized her FCC LA involvement as a springboard into greater voluntary opportunities. She has worked as an advocate for Vanderbilt Children's Hospital by raising funds and awareness, and was honored with their Volunteer of the Year Award. She served as FCC LA's state vice president and president, and currently volunteers as the state officer coach. Working with the newly-elected leadership team locally, she assists with the Weekend Food Backpack Program for students in need and collects food for local food pantries. Callie's a member of her school's reading team, where she volunteers to help students struggling with reading. She also assists with promoting the growth, career, and technical students organizations in the middle school. In addition, she is heavily involved in the local Humane Society, where she plays a vital role in local pet adoption events and fundraising efforts for the nonprofit organization. Callie's an exceptional student, able to attain her associate's degree before she graduates from high school. While her academic achievement is admirable, the qualities and characteristics of a servant leader should stand out more. She has a true giving heart and a passion for helping others. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Callie Cunningham is our twenty-four Volunteer Star Award winner. Thank you. Enjoy. Home to our twenty-four recipient, the adult volunteering side. This year, it's Mr. Brother Field and Ms. Betsy Dunn. Their dedication, commitment, and compassion is remarkable. They're an outstanding example to all of us by the way they live as husband, father, mother, and wife, and gospel preachers. By using experience and service knowledge and influence, they have addressed some of the society's toughest challenges. They began conducting the Better Life Class in Stewart County Jail, teaching inmates to build and develop their skills so they can work with and for the community. Many have seen firsthand the impacts they have had on the future of this county. He not only works to improve their life skills, but also conducts a jail ministry, helping them to understand their purpose in this life as well as the next. Brother Dunn works tirelessly with a backpack program in our county on a weekly basis, filling backpacks with food to help hungry children. Our most at-risk students for food insecurities are also the ones who are most affected by the achievement gap and poor academic outcomes that can have a lifelong impact. These students rely on their school cafeterias for the majority of their nutrition during the week. These supports do not exist over the weekend, and therefore, school systems have backpack programs, weekend backpack programs, sending food home discreetly on Fridays to ensure students are well-fed over the weekend, and can come home in Monday mornings ready to learn. They deliver meals to our elderly and shut-ins addressing senior hunger in isolation. They play a critical role in eradicating hunger and dramatically improving the health of others. One of our most vulnerable communities is our seniors. Seniors are facing looming hunger as inflation reaches historic highs. Their support helps to meet the nutritional and social needs of our seniors, as well as showing kindness and love to those who may need it most. They are volunteers in their time as a camp counselor at Loudwood Christian Camp, which serves second grade through high school students. They model Christ to campers in their words and their actions by being enthusiastic and attentive to the camper's needs. They show up every day with a servant attitude, demonstrating flexibility and creativity when challenging situations arrive. They put forth their best efforts in everything, knowing that it's all for the glory of God. Driving everything, Brother Field and Ms. Betsy Dunn, is the ambition to build a better life for these men and women and children, either senior or adolescents, whose lives he touches daily, as well as build a better world for all of us. Their positivity has impacted so many by donating their time, making our community a better place to live, and giving opportunities to those sometimes forgotten. I can personally tell you that this was also a no-brainer. I get on there and I see all the creative stuff that they come up with in the jails that help that community. I know that the sheriff and Sam are overly appreciative of them because of the hard work and dedication they put in in that community, and as I mentioned, the adolescents and the seniors that you take care of. We just wanted you to know, as we give you this award, that it does not go unnoticed, Brother Field, Ms. Betsy. So, 2024, Brother Field, Dunn, and Ms. Betsy Dunn. I think they all want a sermon. Number six on the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes. If you've had time to look at those, and you have no subtractions or additions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion in property second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Number seven is approval of bi-monthly reports. If you've had a copy of those, if you have any questions on those, we will get you to the right folks. Motion by Commissioner George.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number eight is the Stewart County Debt Management Policy. It's something that we approve countywide every year. If you've had time to look at that, if you have any questions, we will get them to Ms. Heather. If not, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner George.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number nine on the agenda tonight is the exact same thing, it's just a cash flow forecast that we approve every year. If you've had time to look at those, we will entertain any questions. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Motion. Commissioner Redmond, first.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Heather. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number ten on the agenda tonight is approval of notice. We have Ms. Kristen Mathis and Ms. Tiffany Longest, they are both up for renewal.
I move.
Commissioner Fields, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Jones, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eleven is budget amendments, and I will give that to Chairman George.
Budget amendments start on page thirty-seven and go through forty-four. They've all been approved by the Budget and Finance Committee. If you have any questions, we will get answers for you. Hearing none, I will make a motion to approve.
We need to state the one change.
The extra $10,000.
The one change of $10,000 is moving from one line to another, as they have with total, but the total stays the same, right?
Total stays the same, it's just the line I don't see different.
That will be in the motion.
Does everybody understand that? The numbers didn't move, it's just the line I don't see.
Page forty-three, go.
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Watkins. And if we don't mind, let's do a roll call vote.
Alexis Teed.
Yes.
Elijah Thomas.
Yes.
Brian Teever.
You.
Randall Redmond.
Here.
Shane Cates.
Yes.
Eric Watkins.
Yes.
Archie Pryor.
Yes.
Melissa Fields.
Yes.
Bradley Jones.
Yes.
Clint Mathis.
Yes.
Mark Dorch.
Yeah.
Item number twelve was approval of resolution authorizing the approval of Grace Contracting as a contractor for the grant project, and I will let Ms. Heather explain that.
This is a grant that, basically, the commission approved the grant back in August 2023. It was a short-term grant, it's about half a million dollars, $480,000 for renovations on the medical center, funded through ARP or ARCA funding. Eric, you're asking, that is, long story short, the grant ends at the end of March. Right now, the medical center directors were looking at an extension, but due to timing, we went ahead and did the bid, we only had one bidder, which was Grace Contracting. Engineer firm would move forward with negotiating a contract with them, but we need commission to approve that due to timeline. If the grant is extended, then we will bring that contract back to the next meeting.
Does anyone have any questions on that? We entertain a motion. Commissioner George.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pryor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number thirteen is approval of resolution authorizing the approval of A2H Incorporated as a professional consulting engineer firm for the multimodal access grant. This multimodal access grant was started in 2021, and I picked it back up when I got here, and we're just now getting through it. It's still got a couple of things going on, but we have selected A2H in the proper process. That's an engineering firm down around Jackson, I believe. We had two applied, and we picked those over there, so that's all that is. If you have any questions about that, just taking them for the next step, trying to get this sidewalk, yeah. I'll let you take a motion if you don't have any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Mathis, seconded by Ms. Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number fourteen is the approved contract between Stewart County and Property Assessment Alliance LLC for Business Personal Property Audit Services, that's pretty tough to say, and I will turn that over to Ms. Heather also.
This is a contract agreement. Right now, the assessor's office uses state and local tax advisors, they're looking to change to this Property Assessment Alliance. Every year, they do commercial tangible personal property audits for that office, anywhere for maybe three to $5,000 a year. So this is the contract that was negotiated, I reviewed it, had the attorney review it, the assessor, of course, reviewed it as well, but it does need approval from the commission and then the mayor can sign.
Now, this is a brave adaptation.
Correct.
If I recall right here, it's been some time back that we had an audit one year, and they bought in somebody from Nashville to do the audit here, and they flew over, looked at stuff, and gave everybody astronomical rates of their property, and it had to be redone again on account of the outcry. We ain't gonna be up against some, any of this stuff, are we?
I can't speak to that, that's a property assessor's, and first of all, she's not here tonight. I can simply speak to the terms of the agreement, but I can't speak to, I don't even know the process for the assessment, you know, how that is handled in that office, that's not my area, I'm sorry.
Well, I was one of them affected, not everybody else, valuing all everybody's property here in Stewart County, as they did in Davison County and Nashville, and that didn't go over too good, and I don't want to see that happen again. I don't know, is there any spokesman here or anybody for this outfit? Or is nobody from that?
For Alliance? No.
And there's nobody here from the assessor's office?
I think that contract was negotiated by the state of Tennessee for the assessors across the state. I mean, I think if they, if they do a bad audit, I mean, they'd have to go back and fix it. I understand what you're saying as far as getting people riled up, but I don't, I don't think the assessor would have to accept it if she didn't feel like it was a valid audit, and she could go through the proper channels. They just have to express that.
And this is abandoned, if they go hog-wild like they did the other one here, we can say, forget it?
Well, I think the assessor's gonna have abilities to gauge how they're doing the audits and how the process is gonna be handled, but as far as if they come back with an audit we don't agree with, we're just having a dispute. It'd just be like, just like if the assessor assesses your property you don't agree with, you'll have to dispute it and go through the process. But I think, if I remember, correct me, that's on business personal property currently, right?
Lot on four, it basically goes against that right there, says that contractors somehow be responsible for defending legal or appraisal issues.
The agenda may be, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and page forty-seven says specifically performs commercial and industrial tangible personal property audit and compliance reviews.
I thought it was just in the business personal property on this particular contract. You say it's not business personal property? It's in the contract.
No, I'm talking about the other part, like they, we will be responsible for any appraisal issues.
What number are you on?
Number four.
Number four.
I don't think this is real property, like your real estate. And this is more of a market.
Business personal property.
Yeah, it's more of a market question, but I don't believe in states.
Well, that's, if they're doing your personal property, you want it to be done fair, do you know?
Yes, it is a honor, for sure, yes, sir.
But I think what he's saying is it's on personal property, business personal property.
Just business.
So, if you have a business and you have four tracos, you're gonna have, or whatever tools you may have in your business, that's the personal property of this contract.
They're not looking at no residential properties or...
They ought, we're going to in the future, but not addressing, this is not addressing real property tax, or property tax, this is just the best, the personal property.
This kind, this particular contract is for business personal property.
Just for business?
Current, now, there's, I'm not sure what's coming down the pipe, but yes, this is for business, what you're building on right now, business personal property. Like Mayor said, if you've got four tracos, and a lot of it's self-reporting, so it's, if you get audited, you get caught on the audit because you reported, so they send you out a form every year, you report what business personal property you have, and turn it in, and they audit those forms to make sure it's, you know, complying with what you're reporting to the state, and, you know.
I just don't want to see people and their property get screwed, you know what I'm saying?
I don't think this has anything to do with that. That's not aggressive, that's not aggressive with all state.
I don't think this has anything to do with that.
All right.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Go ahead.
Second by Commissioner George. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number fifteen is Report of Dead Obligation for the School Energy Conservation Measures, Capital Outlay ESI, the loan agreement, and I will also let Heather address that if you have any questions. This is kind of an information on that, I don't think we will be doing a, we've already approved it, so it's nothing to approve if I read that right.
Correct.
So, we'd be glad to answer any questions that we can answer, but it was just information on it. Does anybody have any questions surrounding that loan agreement? Okay, number sixteen is Approval of Stewart County Updated Occupational Safety and Health Plan. We have to do this every couple of years, and it had gotten out of whack by several years, so we went in and looked at the Occupational Safety and Health Plan, it's, we didn't, we didn't change anything other than employee numbers. We did have to change some employee numbers on there, but other than that, we didn't change anything, employee numbers and the dates from the last one that was approved, I'm not sure what year that was approved, it was pretty wonderful.
And this is countywide.
It is.
Every department, every day, everybody.
Yeah, the occupational safety side, it is, yes, sir. So we need to approve that, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Watkins, do I have a second?
Yep.
Second by, who do you want? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number seventeen is Approved County Committee Appointments Due to Member Resignations, Equalization Board Lost Mr. Ronnie Allen, his replacement, if you vote on it, will be Ms. Natalie York. We had a resignation of Mr. David Cheam, his replacement will be Mr. Kerry Watson. We could vote on these separate or together, either one you want, if you have concerns with one of them. If you don't, then...
Motion to approve both of them.
Motion to approve both, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The E911 committee had Ms. Donna Lancaster resign, and their replacement was Mr. Rick Joyner. If you have any questions with that, we will discuss it, if not, I will entertain a motion.
So do we.
Commissioner Teever, have a second. Commissioner Watkins, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eighteen is the Approval of Surplus Property, I'll give you a second to look at Can I entertain a motion when you're ready?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Fields. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Redmond, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Number nineteen will be new business. I'll go through some stuff that I have, and then you guys can, if we have some new business, we'll discuss that also. So one thing that was brought up a couple of meetings ago was a work session, March was the best time to have it, because, I'll go with the second thing I was gonna address, if you guys are okay, I would like to move the April meeting from the first to the eighth, and the reason for that is, is the first falls within spring break for the school systems, and I have spoken with three or four or five of you guys that are not gonna be able to attend that meeting, I don't want to cut it that close. On the eighth? How does that work? You can't do it or you have somebody else?
The eighth is a Monday?
Yes, it's just the following Monday. Is it? Okay, Ms. Natalie's gonna be out of town that day, there's nothing says we can't move it to that Tuesday, if any of you are comfortable with that, or if all of you are comfortable with that, I would just assume I have her here, because she takes a lot of slack off of me. Does anybody have a problem moving this meeting to April the ninth?
Natalie isn't there.
So we will move the commission meeting that was set for April the first over to April the ninth. And, yeah, I was thinking about that, I kind of think we need to do a, a majority vote at least, I don't necessarily think it has to be a roll, we do need a vote, we passed it by resolution, right?
You probably should do a vote.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's, I don't know if it's needed, but it's better to have it than not to have it. So, I want to go back to talking to the commission about a work session, having it in March. I will entertain any dates, I don't, my calendar is, night-wise, is pretty close to open, and if you don't want to set it tonight, we can entertain a few dates this week and get it out for sometime in the middle of March. With budget season coming on and everything else that's going on with those many grants and things that we have out in the different communities, I wanted to get together and just discuss all of those, and mainly what's going on in each one of your districts, if you have something that is pressing, or if you have something you want to talk about, it'd be a really good time just to get together. We've spoken with C-Task, and they, work sessions are absolutely legal, they don't violate open laws, we do have to, you know, still put out that we're having them and all that, there's nothing, we don't want to try to hide from them or nothing, it's just an informal way, you won't have much of an agenda, if any, and it's just an informal way to find out what's going on in the communities, what's going on, we can't delineate towards any kind of vote or anything like that, that's the only thing C-Task definitely reminded me of, so if you guys have dates that you really like, I'll, we can set it now, or if you want to, maybe send me a couple of dates, and I can get emails sent out to everyone, and phone calls to you that don't have emails, and pick from a couple, it's completely up to y'all, 100%, I mean, I do think it is needed, though.
Why don't we just do the second, I mean, why don't we just do the 11th? Let's just do it on a Monday, I guess. So there's the fourth and the 11th, the 18th and the 25th.
I want to be available the week of the 11th. 18th was very main.
The 18th, what? How is the 18th? Does anybody have any immediate issues with the 18th? It's not mandatory, but it's, no, the 18th of March, I'm sorry.
Is it Monday?
Uh, yes.
Were you, were you on it before we started?
Yeah, we don't have to, I mean, but, but as long as, you know...
I said those, sorry, had their Monday, March, I was...
There.
Midweek.
I would say they would probably start either the end of that week or the next week, but you said, so that's when we start. Okay, so for right now, and I'll get you all the information about it, and see exactly what, and where, and all that good stuff, so I'll get everybody the information we need to know, and if there's somebody that has a huge problem with the 18th, just let me know, all y'all have my numbers, so just call me, let me know, and we'll, we can move it from there. A quick update on the opioid abatement money, the committee has met one, two, three times now, the school was unable to attend at the last meeting, and so we didn't, I'm not, it was constructive, but we didn't get our goal accomplished, and that was to hear about the programs that they want to offer, so we have another one scheduled pretty quick, I don't remember the date, but it's right around the corner, and that will, that will... around the corner and that will, that will let me give you a little bit more information about the opioid abatement money. We're under oath, it's not a time crunch or any of that. We want to get it out there for the public just so we can start implementing whatever programs they're gonna be implementing with whoever, you know, receives the funds. But as far as the state's concerned, we're not in any kind of time restraint right now. Money's still coming in. We do have times, but it's, I think the first one was twenty-four months. So we're still, we still have plenty behind us. I want to let you know, if you have any questions about it, I'll answer it. I probably can't answer a whole lot of it because we haven't gotten to where, the committee's not gotten to where it's comfortable of saying a dollar amount for anything yet, so recommend to you guys. It's a very strong committee, they're, they're passionate about what they're doing, so. I wanted to just discuss briefly the health department incident, most of you seen that, where the county building, which is the health department, got hit. We don't know by what, police department, there was nothing left there, so we don't know by what. However, we have been in touch with the contractor to get that started and get that moving forward. They are saying that it, we do not have a bill right now, but I can only tell you what the gentleman told me, that it was less than twenty thousand dollars. That will allow us to move forward fast because it falls within our twenty-five thousand dollar threshold and we will just decide it to someone and get it going. There is a problem with the brick on that building being so old, that brick manufacturer is nowhere to be found. However, we have designed a secondary thing that will work and it will look good, it will, you probably won't ever be able to tell the difference, so. But we'll get that going as soon as possible. I will tell you that I was, I was a little bit shocked today. Kudos to the insurance agency, we don't have a bill yet and Heather walked in this morning and said, did you know we were getting a check already? I'm like, no, I don't. So we've already got the check for it, it won't, it won't be anything out for us, but it stinks because the girls missed a day of work, a lot of people missed a day there and things like that happen in our community. If somebody, they wouldn't have been in any trouble if they wasn't doing something that's supposed to be done. It stinks what happened. Just want to give you, catch up on that. The health department's back up and operating, so the only thing we did was remove the air tanks, so. One thing I want to discuss is a little bit on the political side and I try to stay out of regional politics, state politics, all that, I'm not good at it. I get ill, so I don't do as much. I read a bill and it's called House Bill nineteen sixty-eight, we were informed about it at a mayor's conference and then I believe Clint went to a commissioner's conference and I think y'all were informed about it, so anything I missed, you could touch on. This is a caption bill and I can give you what I know about a caption bill and it's not the political thing because a caption bill hides stuff in it. Charles, you're probably not gonna back me up on that, but you'll read it one way and then when you, time you get to the bottom of the bill, it's doing something completely different. So this bill would essentially take the powers for us to set your property tax rate away from us and give it to the state. Now Williamson County, Davidson County, they'd be okay. They have enough sales tax revenue that they might, it might help them. These rural counties where we met with the mayors a couple of weeks ago are against it wholeheartedly. We do not have that revenue source to not be able to set our property tax. I think our property taxes, just a really super quick story, I ran into a guy at P. Wiggly and I shook his hand, told him hi and stuff and we were setting up and he said, hey, you must be from around here, but he had a little bit different accent and we were playing and I said, well, you're not, you know? And I said, how'd you find us here? He told me that he built the house or bought a house down on Sandy Road and said, how do you find us here? He said, oh, you just go find a list of the lowest property tax rates and you'll, you'll find Stewart County pretty fast. So that's a good thing. I don't want that taking the power taken away from the legislative body that knows the days and ins and outs bills that come into this county. I spoke with Juana's this week and was telling them about our school's budget and our local budget and they were like, we had no idea, it's that high? Yes, it's that high. We have a lot to do with the money that we are given. We do not need overreach from our state or our federal level to where we can't pay our own bills, you know? And I, I'm pretty passionate about it and I don't mean to get on that some, but if any of you see Representative Brady or talk to him, I have spoken to him directly, he told me he would, that as of now, from what he's heard, he would not join in with that deal, but I can tell you that bill's pretty heavily carried. That bill's carried by Cam Sexton, so it's gonna be a lot of politics.
What's your number?
It's House Bill nineteen sixty-eight.
Nineteen sixty-eight.
And it's, and it's a bad, are you under the same impression I'm under? It's, it's really, really bad for rural counties. So if you run into him, see him, call him, whatever, just let him know that we have to oppose that. Quick update on the parcel rec grant, it's going good, it's moving along. Yes, it seems like we're not getting anything going. I got a lot of the little leaders saying, when are we getting lights? And I understand the excitement of all that, but it's moving at the state of Tennessee speed. We are still on target. I met with Ms. Shannon Cotter and Mr. Charles Park Senior last week, went over everything, made sure we had everything turned in, it looks good, everything's good to go. If you get anybody wondering about when we're getting lights or when we're starting parks or any of that stuff, it's still on the initial track. We're still looking at the end of the month or first of March, getting an executed contract and then, then it's again, it's a hurry up wait situation then also. So if y'all, I'll be glad to answer any questions you got, I've sat through this pretty hard, so I might can answer if you got any questions on that. Other than that, it's moving right along. It's, it's, we're doing real well with it. All right. A lot of you know that we started a, implemented a trash pickup plan in the county and it is doing well. I even think Ms. Natalie got involved with their church, which is super cool. What I want to tell you is there's still, the reason we did this is because there's quite a bit of money there. Where we were paying, you know, to a couple of ladies, which did an excellent job, after they quit, we couldn't get anybody to, to put in an application to even do it. And when we were doing that, we were paying federal tax dollars and state tax dollars. So what we're, what we are saying now is we're, we still have a lot of money in this. I want you to push it in your communities. If you have nonprofits, churches, any of that that we can give money to, it's the same thing as bidding over picking up a hundred dollar bills. I mean, just, all you have to do is come in, this margin gives a quick class, it, it simply says, just go pick up the stuff you're not supposed to and this is, you know, stay out of traffic. And that is mandated by the state, we can't get around that. But then, send them, send them nonprofits, send them whatever, because there is money in there. So there's still thirty thousand dollars in that, I know. So it's really cool, we can help out nonprofits that way. And then in turn, guys, just by doing that, when, when everyone that's on the nonprofit committees, when they come before us, they might not need as much money, you know? So if they have a really easy access to, to money and that's, was it, it worked pretty well for y'all? Seventy-eight hundred dollars. It's, it's, it's an overrated. Push that, the only reason I'm bringing that up is because spring's coming and we got a few pretty days. If you've got some nonprofits that want to get out and pick up some trash, that would be awesome. There's a couple of other grants that we're looking at, the broadband grant we will know next week, the broad band grant, that's hard to say, broadband grant that I asked a permission to apply for, it was a no match grant. That grant is looking really well, I spoke with her last week, she, she feels like there's a really good chance we're gonna get it, that she couldn't guarantee, but, and that will allow us to put, that courthouse over there is a disaster and I don't mean that, I mean, it's a bummer, it ain't going anywhere, but now logistically, we found that out last week and we had conference calls and everything else. All these guys were, they didn't have internet, I mean, it's, it's a nightmare over there. That will help us with that. So then there's another grant, I've spoke, I've always spoken to Archie briefly about this, it's the Tennessee Public Recreation Grant. I can tell you, and I don't mean to be negative Nelly, but I, I have to be for a minute, our office is bombarded right now. Those girls come into work, and I'm telling you, I do, I work by that bone, so. Those girls come into work and their noses are down until four-thirty or five-thirty or six-thirty. So we cannot flood, I can't go, I can tell you, I can't go after another parcel rec grant right now. You hear people on the internet down here in the community saying, well, there's another grant coming out, there is another grant, there's always gonna be another grant coming out, but the fact of the matter is, is we don't, the, the, getting the grant isn't as important as making sure that we can get the next grant through the same outfit. And we start messing these things up, we're gonna make trouble, we're not, they do an excellent job at it, but they are busy. So when I go into Heather's office, I'm like, hey, look at this grant and she immediately just looks over her computer straight at me, so they're good, they're great, but I just want you to know. But anyways, this, this grant here, I mean, if, if you have something in your district and that's what Archie was thinking, I think he had spoken with maybe Ms. Melissa, if you have something in your community that you feel like we can attack, I, even after I got this grant a couple of weeks ago, I looked into it and it's, it's a competitive grant, but it's, it's, it's not, it won't be extremely competitive because they're spreading it out.
We've locked in district, our district's already locked in as one that could get the grants, I mean, it's got it outlined through a map, it's, I think across the bridge, there was nobody, it was just district, district five.
I think it started at Sandy.
Yeah.
Well, and it's all the way down seventy-nine and to the right side. Yeah, it can go across the bridge if it's something over there that you guys feel like. The only thing is, is you get points for, if we put it in one of the areas that, and if you put it in not in a, in a non-needed area, I don't know what the word, you remember what the word was called for that? It was something, but if you, you put it over there, you're not gonna get it. So we have to attack the areas that they feel like are needed. So, but anyways, it's eighty, up to eighty thousand, I believe, so.
I mean, currently, like our district on our side doesn't have a park for children or anything like that or, you know, rec center or, we could utilize any of that, you know, Melissa's talking about. Finding that location and coming back to the commission is what I told her, I think would be the, I did for now. I think there was a deadline.
There is, yeah, yeah, for sure.
But I think it's recurring, it comes up there with.
It does.
We don't utilize it now, it'd be nice to come back and bring something to the commission and say.
Yeah.
We talked to this gentleman, he's willing to sell the property, we want to put this or whatever, we decided to put there.
And those are awesome conversations for work sessions. You know, tossing around what would do good in a community or something like that, I, I firmly believe that. Another thing I wanted to touch up on, I know I'm long-winded tonight, the Brownfield grant that Ms. Alexis told us all about, we got in touch with, actually she got in touch with Cumberland City and they are exploring applying for that Brownfield grant when we get the school toward a, when the school's down, they want to apply now, but they're, they have some ideas that they want to do down there maybe, and that, putting that school, we're gonna be able to put the block, things like that in the ground, there's several things that we cannot put in the ground. We've got that list and it's very strict, that we won't be able to put it in the ground, but even just the block and the brick that we are, that they even encouraged us to put in the ground, it qualified for the Brownfield grant, at least the assessment part of it. So, and we have put them in touch with a group and they are, got a hold of Kristin, hopefully got a hold of her today. And that'll be huge for Cumberland City if we can get that going. They've already approved, did they approve in the last meeting to actually apply for that grant, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so Cumberland City City Council has already said, we are super interested and we're gonna apply, so. I'm sorry, that was long-winded.
There's more work.
Yeah, that's exactly what we need work jobs for. But yeah, if, now if, if any of you have any questions or comments or, I'm, I'm shut up. Need a kind of new business. You've been retired for thirty weeks now, you don't have no new business?
He stayed in that town.
That's correct. Guys, if we don't have any new business, I will entertain.
Motion to approve.
Second.